Yeah, we'll do that. Okay. Good morning. I would like to call this meeting to order and recognize that I am sitting on the unceded territory of the Lilawat Nation and the Squamish Nation. And I'd like each of you to take a moment and think about the lands on which you sit today. And we are grateful and mindful of our relationship with our neighbors. Can I have someone move approval of the agenda for this committee of the whole? Moved by Director Stoner, second by Director Crompton. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Could I interrupt? Madam Chair, I just got a text from Barb that she's having trouble getting in.
Okay.
So she is trying to get in and she should text Kristen, right?
Yeah. Or she can phone Kristen if that's easier for her.
Maybe phone Kristen. I can provide Kristen's phone number, but not necessarily.
Director Birch Jones, I've asked Natalie to help her. So Natalie should be reaching out to her momentarily.
Good. Thank you. Great.
Thank you. Okay, we're on 3.1, which is a resolution required pursuant to the ministerial order M192 regarding virtual meetings and our bylaw process. Do I have someone move that? I don't need to read it again. Moved by Director DeMar, second by Director Mack. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. We'll go now to the Area B Regional Moment. We'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I understand that the amazing Philippa is going to run some films for me. And really, that's that's my Area B. And it's a reason why I've been trying to establish a service area from for agriculture from the time I got started here. Hi, Philippa. Just go right ahead and run them. Thank you.
Not a problem. Did you want to pause between them or would you like to just go from video to video?
I think just go ahead. It's not more. It's not too much, I don't think.
Okay, not a problem. There'll just be a little bit of a break in between while I switch videos. If I can just ask, once I start the first one, if I can just get an indication that the sound is working, please. And I'm just going to share my screen now.
The sound is working.
Thank you.
It captures you. I always ask people, why Lilawat?
We can grow great food here. It was a combination of getting out of the city and like a really ideal growing environment.
Land is more affordable here, which is one of the biggest barriers to farming in DC.
And I love being able to go down to the Fraser River or up into the mountains, being close to wildlife and wild places. It's a big part of our quality of life here.
There's a lot of space. People are super friendly and yeah, we felt a home right away.
Well, it's like us. I mean, and once you stay, the people, you know, the light, the heat.
And the opportunity. There's a lot of opportunity here.
We grow baby salad greens. In Lilawat, we have a great team of employees who come and help us out. And they're passionate about what they do. They actually care. We currently employ about 15, 16 people. And with ongoing scale, you know, we certainly see that being 25 to 30 in the near future. Most importantly about Lilawat, you know, it's a fantastic community to raise a family in. It's a great place for our kids to grow up. Here at Spray Creek Ranch, we're really focused on producing the highest welfare meats and serving just our local markets through it, our immediate region. Movement is one of the key factors. And you have to always constantly be moving the poultry to new fresh pastures so that they don't overgraze the area that they're living in. The livestock are grazing on one pasture, one area of the pasture for just one day. And then as soon as they move on, the grasses, all of the perennial grasses and and forbs there are starting to recover. The plants get strong, they grow to their ideal height before we come back and graze it again. So yeah, where we're standing in here is a is a great example.
The soil here is just amazing. It used to be the river floor. So there's lots of nice micro and macronutrients. We grow organically. A lot of us are certified or working towards certification. So you don't have to worry about your neighbors spraying pesticides.
I think technically I'm the fourth generation to keep bees here in Lilawat.
We gather seeds so that we can grow our native plants here in the nursery.
I use the sheep tallow in my soap making and this is a naturally tanned sheep skin.
The best thing about farming in Lilawat is that we can grow tomatoes and peppers outside in the field. We grow over 200 varieties of vegetables.
In our own wines, we want to find a lot of elegance. We try and to combine all that Lilawat has to offer. So we offer mostly local foods, local proteins, local vegetables, and try and showcase that off.
The soil here is just amazing. It used to be the river floor. So there's lots of nice micro and macronutrients. The nutrients really impact the taste we find of like the vegetables, like cabbage that we grow here versus cabbage that's grown somewhere else tastes completely different.
Where the sun hits the tomato is the part that goes black, which is anthocyanins, which are like really beneficial antioxidants. And the flavor is very different from anything you've probably ever experienced eating a tomato.
In our own wines, we want to find a lot of elegance, which means that usually the acidity levels in our wines are a little bit higher. The cool nights really help us that way because they keep the acidity in the grapes and makes the wines fresh and elegant.
The fact that there's so many other great food and farming businesses in Lilawat is a big part of what we love about living here. We can grow great food here. I mean, that's a big thing. I'm a farmer, you know, first and foremost, and and it's one of the best regions I've ever seen for farming in this province. In Lilawat, it's kind of like if you plant it, it'll grow. We have a great growing climate. We have abundant gravity-fed irrigation water from a couple of beautiful mountain streams.
We grow organically. A lot of us are certified or working towards certification. So you don't have to worry about your neighbors spraying pesticides. Land is more affordable here, which is one of the biggest barriers to farming in DC. And so I think that's why we're seeing some younger farmers move here.
I would like them to grow up being close to each other and having strong relationships with our community. Knowing where their food comes and the process of how stuff grows.
I'm hoping that everybody in BC will start to find Lilawat. Discover this gorgeous area and together with us, discover our wines. We feel that we're pioneers because we're the first winery in this area. We try and to combine all that Lilawat has to offer. So we offer mostly local foods, local proteins, local vegetables, and try and showcase that off.
You really need to spend time here to appreciate the undercurrents, the sort of getting to know the people, getting to know the landscape. You can't know that by just driving through. Come and spend some time here.
Thank you very much, Philippa. That was flawless. So we produced those over the last year. The funding came through Lilawat Agriculture and Food Society, of course. An IT program that the SLRD applies for on our behalf. It was about $10,000, I believe, to produce those for CLIPS. Economic Development, I think, was the umbrella funding term, but it certainly showcases well that there was a lot more that we would like to have included, but that's what we did. Yeah. So there it is. Any questions?
Go ahead, Director Mack.
Yeah, that that's very, very exciting. It's amazing how much is going on over there. You, like they said, you don't realize it when you just drive through, which I'm going to do on Saturday morning really early. But anyways, no, that's really cool. Good for you.
Hey Vivian, thanks for that. I had, we carry a bunch of those farms products in our restaurant, by the way, including Spray Creek and others. What was the second winery? Is that the new winery? They was just featured really briefly in that clip. What is that?
Cliff and Gorge Eckert Ziedler. Yeah, and he is producing wine and he, you by appointment now can go out. Actually, it wasn't at this meeting. I was lobbying with MOTI the other day, Sal, our meeting, saying, can you just fix the end of Texas Creek Road, please? Because even though we're like branded as guaranteed rugged, us little stretch to Eckert's Winery is a little bit hair raising, but good for his sales. I don't know. It's it's about 20 kilometers out Texas Creek, so past Spray Creek. And it's an absolutely magnificent piece of property. When you saw the three people looking over the Fraser just right at the edge, that was sort of where we wanted to have the park. It just sits down the gorge of the Fraser and it's really beautiful. And it's so, yeah, about 20 kilometers south of downtown Lilawat.
But he's just selling out of, off of his property right now or has he got himself into liquor stores?
I don't believe he's in the liquor store, but I suspect he gets a lot of private orders and it's organic wine. And so it's gotten some very good reviews from some very fussy wine drinkers.
Awesome. Thanks.
Go ahead, Director DeMar.
Yeah, if you saw the apple orchard, some of you may know who the owners are. That's Jeff and Karen Playfair. The fire chief at Whistler until they retired and moved there. So I get a couple of boxes of his apples every year in the fall.
Yeah, it's just beautiful. It's so much bigger in that perspective of there's so many more different types of agriculture there. I often think of Lilawat as being very dry and can probably only sustain one type, but I'm wrong about that. It's absolutely gorgeous. Anyone else? Go ahead, Barb. Director, we?
Great job, Vivian, showing all our hidden gems. And the winery up on Texas Creek, I can honestly say my daughter's in Calgary, whichever one happens to become, come to visit, goes home with hundreds of dollars of wine from there to share with sisters and dog sitters. He sells out early. I know, actually, to answer Director Richmond, he, Eckert did come to a couple of farmers markets and events for people to sample, but he found he didn't need to. The product, people are going out of their way for the product. So that's a big success. And Fort Barron's is wildly popular and has won all kinds of awards too. And we're happy, starting to sell the food again. And the last couple of years have been tough. But, but here we are. And it's really Sarah Petsnick, the Executive Director of Lilawat Agriculture and Foods, who sort of organized all of that. And Brad Castleman, who's from Whistler, did a lot of the filming.
He's got a place up there, I believe.
He does. And he has a plot right next to the Cliff and Gorge Winery. Yeah.
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have a delegation. And Kristen, are they both here yet or are we still waiting on those two?
We have Veronica Woodruff in the waiting room.
Okay.
And still waiting for, for Mr. McCady.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I do believe that's Troy Bacati. Not whatever it is, but it's Troy Bacati. Thanks.
Thank, thank you.
Oh, is it misspelled? Okay, thank you. Well, I guess you can bring Ms. Woodruff in.
Hi.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thanks. But there you are. Like, who's talking?
Um, we are just one minute early and we're waiting for Mr. McCady. So we we welcome you to this committee of the whole.
Thank you.
And look forward to hearing what you have to say. Are you sharing the presentation or are you presenting?
I am going to present. Apparently you are sharing for me the PDF. Yeah, Philippa's got it.
Great. And we can hear you well. So that's great.
Excellent. I have a dog next to me, so fingers crossed.
It's okay.
World of Zoom.
That's the life of Zoom land.
Exactly. I wonder if I should just get going while Troy is connecting. I was going to do the presentation anyway, and then hopefully Troy will log in and he can answer any questions. Does that sound okay?
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So my name's Veronica Woodruff. I know many of you. I am here to discuss the Meager Creek Landslide Rehabilitation Proposal that we are working with Leavatt Nation to put together. Next slide. I know, I just thought I'd do a little quick little recap. I know everybody here is likely familiar with the landslide. Can you see my cursor? Probably unlikely. Nope. Okay. So on the before pictures on the left-hand side, you can see the secondary peak below the primary peak. And that is the mass of land that moved from the top of the valley to the bottom in 2010 during the Capricorn Creek landslide. It was 50 million cubic meters was mobilized in that slide. Next slide. So this is looking at the where Meager Creek meets the Lilawat River. And you can see the Lilawat's the one at the bottom of the screen. And Meager Creek, there's quite a bit of disruption. So there's a ton of gravel. You can see that this is an actively eroding mountain. It is a volcano that the last time it erupted, it was during a glaciated period. So it cooled quickly. And it's been described as a mountain made of ball bearings. Next slide, please. So this is looking at the debris field after the 2010 slide. And so you can see how much area was inundated with that 50 million cubic meters. Next slide. And what happened here was this is looking at that secondary peak, a close up, and you can see the edges of where the landslide occurred. That's a helicopter for scale. Next slide. And this slide was significant enough that it registered up through Alaska, down through Oregon on the seismic meters there. This is looking at the, where Capricorn Creek meets Meager Creek. That's Meager Creek in the slide. And you can see that the the banks are still really mobile. It's a ton of mineral material. And this is the debris field that's being mobilized into the downstream reaches of the Lilawat River that is really affecting our flood capacity here when causing an increase in flood risk in the populated areas through Pemberton. Next slide. And this is a picture from last August. So you can see it's a ton of mineral soil, even after 10 years, there isn't a lot of regrowth going on. And so what we're looking to do, next slide, we are proposing to help nature with its successional processes. Of course, over time, nature's going to do her thing and fill in the gaps in that landslide debris. But what we're looking to do is augment that process and start to repair those ecosystems in the trajectory towards a fully recovered ecosystem. Next slide. And so this kind of landscape, I know it seems like an ambitious project, but this kind of landslide, landscape scale restoration has been done in the past. Dave Polster is leader in this field in some of the work he's done in mining and developing really innovative bioengineering techniques using plants to stabilize mobile soils. This is Miller Creek in Pemberton, where he stabilized a landslide debris that is working absolutely beautifully and as intended. This was, you know, 11 years later, it's, it's working perfectly. So we are going to use a number of these tried and tested solutions for landscape scale restoration. This has also been done on BC Hydro reservoirs. Next slide. This is looking at a restoration project at the toe of the slide debris. This is Alina Creek. That is Mount Meager and Capricorn drainage in the background. This project was done in 2015 and this is a photo taken last year. And you can see with some intervention, you've got a ton of regrowth. We've got a creek going through and we've used some of the landslide deposited woody debris to cover our stream restoration there. And so we know that it is possible with intervention to create this vegetated landscape. Next line. So what we're proposing here isn't to do this on the entire landscape field. We are going to be creating corridors to connect wildlife corridors across the landslide debris and along important riparian areas of Meager and Lilawat River because it is important area for Coho, Chinook, Bull Trout, and Cutthroat Trout in this location. Next slide. So what we've done here, Leavatt Nation received a seed funding grant through the Habitat Conservation Trust Fund to further develop the proposal. And part of that is to develop these partnerships. We have had interest from all levels of government to support this project, including, there's a ton of work going on at Meager through National Research, the National Research Council on the federal level. The forestry restoration that the team that works mostly in Forest Fire are really keen to see that area revegetated. Next slide. And also, we've reached out to a number of academic partners. BCIT has expressed incredible interest and we, in the process of developing a really strong partnership with them, we're interested in making this their outdoor lab to support their Bachelor of Science program and their Masters of Ecological Restoration students. And across their terrestrial, aquatic, and geospatial disciplines. So to have this as a training lab, but also to support the project through getting the monitoring, the design and the implementation of the restoration project. Next slide. And of course, we've reached out to industry partners. So for example, we, if there's logging roads going in on nearby, we can have them stockpile the top soil that they're going to be disturbing. And this is the kind of important thing that we can incorporate into the restoration sites to get that, all that really great mycelium and to try to augment that really mineral soil that currently exists there. And so far, we've had excellent interest. Next slide. And of course, our community partners that have mandates related to fish, wildlife, and ecosystem restoration. Next. And so we have a couple of funding opportunities coming up. The Environmental Damages Fund is a federal fund that really aligns well with this project that should open in July. And we've got the Habitat Conservation Trust Fund, the Aboriginal Fund for Species at Risk, Civic Salmon Foundation, all align well with this project that we're going to be looking at funding. And next slide. So the way we're going to do this is, this is my last slide, is a phased approach. What we're going to do is do the assessment to see what's there to really map out the areas where we do see some natural vegetation growth, the areas that have the highest likelihood of survival. And then we're going to do some trials to see what techniques are going to work the best because we don't want to use all of our funding to try to use one technique that isn't going to be successful. Again, this phased trial approach has been done on large landscape scale restoration projects. So we're looking to implement tried and tested method to doing a large-scale restoration like this with the ultimate goal over the next 10 years to have those full corridor restoration. And the idea is, once we've got corridor, corridors, they can start to naturally revegetate outward for long-term successional processes to be improved. And of course, monitoring and the adaptive management of our plan. So the reason I'm here today is not looking for funding contribution at this time, but more support. So we were recently at the Village of Pemberton and they said that they, they provided us a letter that said, we support this project in principle. And we are looking for the same kind of thing from the SLRD. This is important for going to funders saying, you know, we've connected with different government agencies and looks really great for garnering funding to move forward on a big project like this. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Let's go to Director Birch Jones.
A great presentation and a great project. I was pretty excited when I read about it. And I know Dave Polster and you have amazing talent there and the connection with BCIT is pretty exciting too. So I'm definitely in favor of supporting this.
Thank you. And I would also like to welcome Mr. Bacati to the meeting. We did start a couple of minutes early because Ms. Woodruff was here. But thank you for being here today and happy to give you the floor if there's anything you wish to add to the presentation or we can continue on with questions if you'd like.
Thank you for starting without me. It's a very exciting time and I totally got carried away out at the river checking the levels and they're fine, by the way. And but there is a pretty dire forecast over the next few days. And so we're, we're getting our our monitoring, I guess, procedures in place. And and I like going out and looking at the river too. So anyways, last week I brought a class of grade sevens all the way up to Keyhole and and we toured the area of the slide and I told them of the story. And it's amazing. Imagine a class of grade sevens went quiet to listen to me about geology and rivers. And I was amazed because the teachers were having a hard time to get their attention. But once I started talking, they were, they were to get their attention. But once I started talking, they were they were very interested, and they had a few questions as well. So it's it'll span across all ages, I guess. And I'm very excited about what B C I T was bringing around and also the other schools as well. And and I know you're all interested as well. And it's going to be a lot of work. And and thank you all for listening.
Thank you. And does anyone else have any questions? Director DeMar, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. That was excellent. You know, I'm up in the Bridge River Valley, and B C Hydro, along with Bach and Bar has been working at the Gun Creek Fan, doing some restoration work there, too. So it's 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 interesting seeing what what they're doing on at the Carpenter Reservoir. And watching that presentation, they just linked it all together. So it's it's good to see that this is happening. And I like the whole concept of the wildlife corridor, because that is probably an old grizzly bear path through there. So it's good to see.
Great. Thank you.
That area is actually really important for grizzly bears. I did a lot of the assessment work for the hydro project there and also worked for B C Hydro, not in Carpenter, but on other reservoirs doing similar work. So I thought to bring that here to this application. And also really important for Wolverines, a really high density of Wolverines was determined to be in the area from the assessment work. So yeah, really cool wildlife values that we're hoping to to restore.
Excellent. Director Elliott, go ahead.
I'm just, we have the university sector represented, but I was interested in that Troy mentioned having school groups there. And I wonder, are there opportunities as this progresses to to provide more of that education at the the grade school level?
I would promote that. We haven't till now. And it just so happened they needed a driver in a truck. So that's how I got involved with them. And I ended up to be, I guess, a guide.
Yeah. And through Sturgis Pemberton with the One Mile Lake Nature Center, we hosted some community field trips to the slide debris. And we thought maybe, you know, the first one we did, maybe 20 people will show up to drive all the way up there. And we had over 100 people show up. And we had to take a huge convoy out there. So I know that there are interests with our families that are registered in our nature camp, and we have good ties into School District 48. So again, that's the important piece of the different partners and bringing in those community partners that can make those connections.
Just think, you know, this project really shows how people can be, you know, providing that reciprocal relationship to the land again, right, to help restoration. It's such a great lesson for kids to see that, you know, nature is pretty powerful, but humans can play a part in helping her along. And I think that's why people will be very fascinated by this project, because they'll be able to watch it evolve over their lifetime, especially these young folks, you know, to go in grade seven and then go back 10 years later. It's going to look really different. And and that's an amazing thing to to watch and experience. And hopefully, we create more environmental scientists and geologists and from from that kind of experience. So thank you very much for bringing this to the board.
Great. Absolutely. Yeah, that's well said. Um, any final comments from anyone? Uh, thank you both so much for this presentation. I hope that this message gets out to our broader communities, because as Karen said, there's so much interest in in being a part of and witnessing this incredible experience that's happening around us. So we're very grateful to you for the work that you're about to do and have been doing. And we look forward to partnering. I I guess, at what point do we put together a letter or a resolution to write the letter, C E O? Homer?
So after we come out of this meeting, if there's a board resolution that's passed, then staff will take it away and draft it up and submit it for your approval.
Okay. Great.
Move that we support this project in principle and provide a letter of support.
Okay, moved by Director Elliott, seconded by Director DeMar. Is there any further discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Have a wonderful day.
I know.
Thanks. We have a second delegation coming in. Okay. Um, good morning, Mr. Tyndall. Is he still connecting? Okay, there we go. There we are. Good morning, Mr.
Good morning.
Hello. Thank you for being here today. So Mr. Tyndall is the G M of Forestry Operations for Lilawat Forestry Ventures L P. And you are here to talk to us about these Elcum Community Forest?
Spelkumten. Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. And the floor is yours.
Okay. Well, yeah, thanks for having me. Just wanting to let everybody, give everybody a quick update on the Spelkumten Community Forest and and some harvesting plant near near the Owl Ridge community. So it's I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with the Spelkumten Community Forest. It is a it's a joint joint community forest between the Village of Pemberton and Leowatt Nation. It got established this spring, and it basically is a big circle that surrounds both communities, the location. If if anyone's interested, they can send me an email, and I'll happily share some of the maps with you to show the location of the community forest. It's its mandate is basically to create profits and employment for for the communities. And the the profits are split between between the two communities. So the majority of the the management of the the community forest currently is is getting done by Leowatt Forestry Ventures. So we we had some of these areas in our current tenure before the community forest became established. B C Timber Sales had some of the other areas. Just so you guys are familiar with some of the locations where the community forest would be located, going it's Miller Creek up past Cedar Grove Estates, as well as on the other side, past Weldon Talbot's up there over on McKenzie Basin is some of the other locations over on the Green River as well. Partway, I think up to about the five, six kilometer on the Green River, kind of surrounding One Mile Lake, which is anywhere that's not a park, as well, kind of Narren Falls, that area. Going kind of the other way is, sorry, we're going towards Mount Curry. We also have the areas behind there. So behind behind Mount Curry and as well as kind of as far north going up to going up to Owl Ridge is kind of this circle of the of the Spelkumten Community Forest. So a lot of it is is near and close to high value areas, whether it's cultural areas, whether it's you know, close to people's residence, whether it's close to recreation. So we are doing our best to consult and inform people about all the work that we're doing. These, this block, for instance, that we're talking about has gone out into, has gone out to public houses and an information session for the for the Village of Pemberton. So we've had, they had a Zoom information session this year that people could attend as well as in in actual open houses. When we got to see people in real life, we we actually had an open house that that people came and looked at the map. So this has been in the works for a while, obviously, as well as in Mount Curry. It's gone out in a number of public open houses again before the before COVID set in. So so these areas have gone out to the communities and any of the the work that we're doing near the Owl Ridge community, we I have a fairly long list of of people that, you know, live in the area. And so I sent them out a an information kind of bulletin with this block in it, and it it also listed as you can, we, there's three maps that are getting shown here. This is the ortho photo showing the trees. The first map is the actual block map there. If you guys can see it, it's kind of a donut, again, taken out. So the middle is all getting retained, and it's just kind of a the outside of the donut that's getting harvested. And, you know, there were, there was quite a few people that were concerned about the harvesting near their communities. So I went and met with the group close to 20 people. And it was a very good open house. I talked to them about their, the majority of their concerns. You know, they didn't want to see a big clear cut, which obviously this isn't. They they, that was their main concern, their concerns with water. If you guys can see in the block, there's no streams that actually occur through the block. So they didn't have any concerns with water quality. A number of the residents have concerns with the rockfall. And the third map shows, and this one even does show the contour lines, the the way that the mountain goes here. Any of the rocks that would roll down one, that center area that's being kept is a gnoll, a rock, kind of a big rocky knoll. So it's, it would actually prevent any of the rocks from sliding down as well as that the fact that there's no houses located below this. It's a B C Hydro line, and then the highway and roads. But, you know, we continually work to improve the work we're doing. So we we did bring in Pierre Freely, a geotechnical scientist to just, you know, do a quick report and look. And he said there was no no concern of of rockfall damaging any any structures. He said, by the time I got down to there, the the trajectory of the the rocks, the speed of them would slow down unless it's a rock the size of my pickup or something. And then there's not much that can slow that rock down. So but but a lot of the residents do have concerns of rocks rolling down and hitting their houses and that kind of calm that concern down. Their their third probably main concern and the one that I was left with is the the condition of that Owl Ridge Road. If you guys can see, there's not a lot of hauling on the Owl Ridge Road before we get to the the main highway. You're looking at you know, 500 meters to approximately 500 meters to a kilometer of paved road. But their their main concern, and I guess we see it more with our areas that are located behind Owl Ridge. So Woodlot 49 is located behind Owl Ridge. And when we do haul, harvest and haul out of there, it does go through the Owl Ridge community. We've we've done a lot to to make their community safe, you know, limiting the speed of the trucks, not hauling during school times. So so doing things to to keep them safe or safer, you know, as safe as we possibly can. But there, the the feeling that I was left with was that they they don't feel like their road's being maintained to the the quality that they would like, and they're just concerned with with logging trucks going down. You know, we said out of this project, there's only, it's about 2,000 meters. So we're looking at about 40 logging truck loads. It's not a lot that's going to come out of there. So that kind of let them feel good about this project, but for future projects, especially out of our Woodlot 49. They're they're wanting to see, you know, what can be done about their road. So I'm sure you guys have heard about that in the past. It's nothing new. But yeah, that that was the biggest concern that I was left with. The other thing, kind of what what made them concerned was the fact that they did see ribboning all around their area. And that ribboning was actually not done by the Wild Forest Ventures. It was done by consultants working for the Ministry of Forests, looking to do fuel thinning projects. And I'm not sure if they've consulted with you guys as well, but it's it kind of got me into some hot water because they thought we were laying out cut blocks behind their houses, and it was actually a fuel thinning project that we had nothing to do with. We've had some discussions with the ministry, and I'm going to continue with that because, you know, we've worked really hard to develop rapport with these with this community. And when other people are going in and doing the work, and, you know, it looks like it's us, then then it does get us into some hot water. The other thing that got us into some hot water was somebody that had some private land below the Owl Ridge Road, and they built a small driveway in through Crown Land, and did some clearing down on their private land right near the river. And again, they thought it was a low off Forest Ventures clear cut. And to be honest, I had no idea of any of the work besides until I started hearing comments from them about our logging down by the river. And knowing that everything below the river is in protected spiritual ground, I I knew it wasn't us doing the work and went out there and kind of solved the problem. But again, it's yeah, it's a lot of the other work that's getting done in the area that's not being referred to the community that that does get us into some hot water. So um, if you want to kind of flip through to the the last map there, you can see this block, B H nine oh two. And just, yeah, that that shows the slopes. I don't know if you guys are good with contour lines, but it does show that basically the the mountainside itself doesn't go towards the the residents' houses there. Maybe just one more quick thing, going back to the first map. We are going to work at trying to share some information a little better with the community. So everything in white here is the only areas located in the timber harvest land base, so where we can actually harvest. Things in yellow, for instance, on the right of the cut block is Ungulate Winter Range. And the left is culturally spirited ground. And then in the darker green, even to the left, is is all growth management area. So I think we're going to be better off to just make it one color to share with the communities as a no go and a go zone, so they can see how much area is actually protected around their communities. The green as well down below the cut block to the south of it is is also protected. Their W Wildlife Tree Retention Area. So I I think that'll make people feel a lot better when they see all these no go zones around their communities and see that, okay, there's only a small area that we can harvest in. And, you know, we're not getting any closer in the especially in the Spelkumten Community Forest here to to log near their community. I think that'll give them some some feeling of calm. And I kind of learned that from the meeting that, you know, these maps are a little too confusing, really necessary for foresters, but not necessary for the general public. And they just want to see where we can log and where we can't. So right, that's kind of a summary of this project. We don't have any other blocks planned currently for this year. And or or that's near the community. We've got about 5,000 meters that we're currently harvesting in the Green River. And it's it's in the process right now of getting harvested. We put all the all the logs or all the logging out to all the local contractors to bid on and and take the lowest price on that. So that's been the procurement policy for that logging. And for the logs themselves, we're working on a local procurement policy as well for local people to look at purchasing logs. So that's kind of another thing that we're working on and and trying to make it so as long as they're willing to pay. So as long as they're willing to pay fair market value and pay ahead of time, they're able to purchase logs out from the Shiloh Community Forest as well. So, yeah, I hope that gives you guys a good update and just, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to help.
Thank you very much. Director Mack, go ahead.
Thanks for that, Clay. Yeah, I think the absolute most important thing, obviously. Whenever you're going to be doing any work is to make sure that there's. Lots of upfront communication with the communities. It's too bad that the regional district wasn't involved. You know, in some of the discussions when this community forest was put together because. The majority of the four, the community forest is in the regional district and close to. A lot of our communities. So it's absolutely important that. That there's a lot of communication because people do get. You know, very concerned about what is going on. As you well know, I've met with you more than once about. The Owl Ridge concerns and it's the same everywhere. I mean, up here in Darcy area, Divine. Birken, wherever, if people are brought up to speed and know exactly what's going to happen. Then, you know. They can, they can feel comfortable about what you're doing. So anyways, I think that's the most important thing is communication. So thanks for that.
Yeah. And, and just so you guys know, this block hasn't been putting in, put, hasn't been put into cutting permit yet. And it hasn't been put out to, to tender for, for a bid on logging. The work is looking to be done kind of late fall, early winter. So I am trying to look ahead and at least give some people some notice. So we're not. Meeting them today and going logging tomorrow. So I, I know that's not always a good thing either. So yeah, this is. You know, like I said, we've shared it with, with people and other forums, but I thought, yeah, kind of a. An in-person meet was the best. And yeah, I thought that meeting went really well. I answered lots and lots of different good questions. So.
Great.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Thanks Russell. Yeah, thank you.
Director DeMar, go ahead. And then Director Richman.
Vivian was first.
Go, go ahead, Sal.
See, Vivian was first. I'll let her speak.
Jen's the chair.
Sorry, Jen, Vivian was.
It's fine.
Okay. Yeah, a couple of things. I really like your map. It, it's excellent. It really, I'm used to them and, but I'm not used to the spiritual. And the archaeological area on it. Because I've looked at a lot. Up at the northern stallium, they actually don't want those on maps. For various reasons. So it's, it's interesting to, to see that. The, the other question I've got is. Being a community. Is there any percentage of, of the value of the harvesting that will go to the community? So maybe half a percent or one percent or something like that. I've seen some of the community forests doing that. I'm not sure on the one for. That, that Whistler has down there. I've seen other one like in, in Yale area.
Uh, so, so right now, all the profits basically go to both communities. So, and it's a fifty fifty split between the village of Pemberton and, and Lewat Nation. For instance, the blocks that are getting logged in the Green River right now, they're looking to show about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in profits. And, and those profits will go back to the community forest itself. I don't think the community forest necessarily has a mandate of how much they're going to, you know, keep, you know, in, in reserve. In case of, of, can, you know, they want to build future roads, do things like that. But I do know. There will be a certain percentage shared between the two communities. And I know there's even talks about the two communities kind of working together with that money. To, you know, do a project that then they can share. Because I know that with, with the Wild Forest Ventures, that's one of the best things that we've done is being able to show where our profits go. Know the fact that the profits from our logging have gone to build an immersion school for the nation, for instance, right? And, and, and help with the Dizel Learning Center and just. Showing where that money goes. It just doesn't just disappear and go into the general coffers. The, the people can, you know, put value towards the, the logging. I think that really helps. So, yeah, it's. The community forest, like I said, just got established, but no, the profits will go back to the communities and, and hopefully go to award some great projects here moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Director Richman, go ahead.
Thanks. Thank you, Chair Ford. Um, thank you, Clay. This is really a great presentation. I spent a long time looking at the maps. When it's called Owl Ridge, I automatically think that that would be historically northern spotted owl habitat. You think that's right?
There, there are owls in the, in the area. There's one owl that, that does have a nest there. It's not a spotted owl though. The, the nation and, and in our operating areas, we do have a lot of managed. Forest for spotted owl. Some of it's in long-term reserve and some is in managed forest where we. Kind of thin, but we keep forty stems a hectare to create more of a old growth. Stand structure for owls. And, and I think, I think the plan is to release some from that are getting bred down in Chilliwack here in the next. Decade or so. So, yeah. The gos hawks are really liking the spotted owl habitat though as well. So, and, and we have established a gos hawk W H A across the, across the valley. So, yeah. The raptors are enjoying all the, the protected areas. So.
That's fantastic. And, and also that, that I see that. Some of those sections that you set aside, I, I went hooray and I just wanted to check because I didn't see tailed frogs reference. And then I think I heard you say that. You're actually not going to be logging over any waterways. Did I hear that correctly?
In this, in this block, yes. And. Yeah, we, we don't actually have any identified for the, the tail frogs. It's more a bit south of here. That, that those areas are kind of set aside and protected. But, yeah, it's in this block here, there's no, no riparian areas or streams. It's a pretty dry area. Other areas, the Green River, there are some wetter and, and wetter riparian areas there. And, and one of the things that it does differently is we do have bigger retention areas. Than what's required by the government. We, it does affect our profits. Because we're protecting cedar, for instance, which anyone who's bought anything that's made of cedar, like a plank or anything knows. The value of cedar is unbelievable at the moment and it's our highest value log by far. But. You know, it's, it's a long-term plan and it's, it is protecting really important values for the community. So.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Director Richmond on the phone.
Am I?
Uh, just, you said, I think about forty, forty loads coming out of the Owl Ridge, Owl Ridge Road. How long are we going to be actively hauling to do that? When?
A week?
Take a week to do that?
Yeah, they usually, they, they could have up to five trucks. And two, two, two runs a truck. So you're doing about ten a day. So you can do it in about four days. It's up to the contractor though. The contractor may only have three trucks. So it might take them a week and a half or two weeks. But. Yeah, no more than two weeks to get all that wood out.
So I don't know if you said it already, but when is it scheduled for?
Uh, probably later in the fall. So it's a, a good spot to go when. When it's a bit wetter and cooler. We, we don't want to, you know, with fire hazard and everything else, we, we would prefer. And the fact that it's low elevation, it's a good time. So probably November.
Great. Well, thanks for doing that meeting. I know there were a bunch of people up there that were quite concerned. So thanks for looking after that. It sounds like wow, wow. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, I know. I, I really enjoy talking to people and letting them know what we're doing. It's, we're really proud of the work we do and it's great to let people know. So.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate this communication and we look forward to future communication as well and. And we hope to see you again.
Thanks. And if, if anyone is interested in talking to me about anything else. I don't know if, if my email is available to everyone or if I can, if, if you can put it out there. But yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions, share maps, things like that. So. No, it's, it's definitely part of my job and, and happy to help. So.
Yeah, all of your information is in our package, which is publicly distributed on our website. So. The maps and everything are there and they're incredibly detailed and it's very, very helpful for those that are looking for that detail. So thank you.
All right. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. You too. Bye.
Bye bye. All right. Okay, let's move along to six point one, which is a C O verbal update.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing to report today.
Okay. Uh, great. We'll go along to, imagine we've got someone coming in. Around six point two. Great. Okay. Are we all connected? Kim, you're, you're working today as far as your video and your audio is working. Unlike yesterday, it wasn't working.
Yes, I've solved that problem. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, good morning, Director Needham and Mr. Vance. Thank you for being here. We're on six point two. We're looking for. A presentation on the Tiger Bay Development Corporation. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm going to introduce Eric Vance, who you. Met a few times before. This application has, has been by the board and the committee of the whole. On three occasions, June twenty twenty, November twenty twenty, March twenty twenty one. And it's back today. The idea is that. The applicant has addressed. The board's previous comments about the application. And Mr. Vance is going to take you through his presentation to explain. What has changed in the application since the board last saw it on March twenty twenty one. So with that, I will leave it to Mr. Vance.
Good morning and, and thank you to the board. My apologies, for some reason, my. Video is suddenly not working, which perhaps is just as well. I've had some eye surgery recently and I have to. Lean in quite close to the screen to see things. So you will not have to enter a close up of my. Nose and forehead. So it's probably for the best. Kim, because you have the presentation up there and because I was a failure the last time. I tried to share it. Do you mind doing what we did before, which is you, you changed the slides as, as required?
I can see your presentation now, Eric. I don't know if the rest of the group can.
Sorry, through the chair, that's, that's myself. It's Philippa from the S L R D staff. I'm just sharing the presentation. And if you would like to give me a cue. When to advance the slides, I can do that for you.
Okay, that's much appreciated. Thank you for that. So to, to, to remind the, 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 the board. That this is an application by Tiger Bay to amend both the O C P and the zoning. For South Britannia and those two are running through concurrently. Next, please. So the board last received a staff report on this item at the regular meeting on March twenty fourth. There was very good discussion. There was a number of questions, observations. Issues raised. And so the direction of the board at that meeting. Was the staff continue to work with the applicant on the issues were raised and bring back a report to a future meeting. And. That is why we are here today. Next, please. I apologize for the quality of the image here. This is the phasing plan, which is one of the things the board was interested in. There's four phases to the development. Showing here in fuzzy form. The development generally runs from north to south, but not entirely. As the board will see, phase one is the. Surf park and a number of components associated with it. And then we move into some of the residential phases. And as I said, it generally moves south, but it does hop around a little bit. So. Phase four, in fact, there's some final residential that'll take place up in the northern part of the site. So this phasing plan is important because this is tied to a number of Tiger Bay's amenity. Contributions and other obligations. Next, please. So one of the items was raised by the board at the last meeting is there was some vagueness. Around exactly what Tiger Bay's amenity contributions and other obligations were. What were they absolutely committing to as opposed to suggesting? So they have now come back and it's in the attachment, the submission by Tiger Bay. They, they've included more. Information in there, phase by phase. There will be added details included in the term sheet. And the term sheet will accompany the bylaws when they're brought forward for consideration of first reading. That term sheet is very important because ultimately that will be turned in to a development agreement that needs to be registered to on title. As part of the board's consideration of fourth reading. So that locks in all those. Obligations and contributions to the land. So it runs with the land, not with the owner. Next, please. So these are just some examples I'm, I'm going to go through now of, of some of the obligations and commitments by Tiger Bay. There's many more. That are laid out in the submission by Tiger Bay, but we thought we'd hit some of the highlights. So. These are prior to rezoning. So these are not part of the term sheet, these three items. These are things that need to be done. Before consideration of rezoning. So there was a detailed hazard assessment. Already done for Gravel Creek and that was peer reviewed by the S L R D's consulting engineers. There are detailed hazard assessments still required for this thistle and Daisy Creeks. Now there has been work done. It's not as if there is no work been done, but there's a desire, because this is obviously a major issue. For more detail. So Tiger Bay is committed to doing that. And they say they will start on that after first reading. Modi Highway Access Approval is obviously also required prior to rezoning. And C N Rail preliminary approval for Manati Bay Public Crossing. Pardon me, as the board will recall, from a free, previous staff report. C N has indicated to the applicant that they are not interested in further discussing this item. Until, until and unless the bylaws receive third reading. So that's certainly something that needs to be resolved before rezoning. Next, please. So after rezoning, and that's part of the term sheet slash development agreement in all phases, there'll be. The provision of parks, paths, trails, contributions to fire services. And I'll come back on some of these items. So every phase will have some of that. Phase one, some of the examples of things that need to be done. Obviously, design and construct a sanitary sewer connection to the North Britannia Plant. Design and construct a pathway to North Britannia. And that pathway is proposed to run over the sanitary sewer connection. Right of way arrangement and design and construct the gravel creek wetlands area, which is adjacent to the surf park. Next slide, please. Examples of some of the phase two obligations. Again, I'll come back to these a little later in the presentation. Adopting a housing agreement bylaw for the one hundred and fifty market and below market rental units. Tiger Bay is also committed as part of phase two to dedicate the eighty meter wide corridor. Running alongside the B C hydro right away for the potential highway bypass in the future if required. But they're prepared to make that dedication, whether or not it's known that will be required. They will do the dedication of Manati Bay Park, which is the twelve plus acres. They will dedicate the playfield and community center site. That community centers will discuss may include a school that's on no one, obviously at this point. And they will design and construct the transit loop. Next slide, please. Phase three, design and construct the permanent C N R overpass. Unless C N R requires that earlier in the process. That's unknown. Until the applicant can, with the S L R D. in the process. That's unknown until the applicant with the SLRD can get into a detailed discussions with CN. Phase three, the applicant will also design and construct the playfield. And phase four, pardon me, the major item is designing construct the community center. Next slide, please. Pardon me. Now, the board had raised last time some concerns about how the density was concentrated or distributed on the site. The applicant's response on that is they concentrated the density in the area of the site was formerly used for gravel extraction. So it's obviously a heavy industrialized area. And they plan on leaving 70% of the site undeveloped out of their total holdings. That includes the potential highway bypass area. They they say that this concentration of the density will create a walkable community. And it'll be served by a network of trails, sidewalks, roads for pedestrians and cyclists. And this is something the board wanted more information on. So the next slide. Pardon me, shows the cycling and walking network. They've overlaid a five and seven minute walk lines around that. So it shows that the site is fairly walkable, certainly cyclable. Obviously, when we're down in the southern reaches of Manati Bay Park and wanting to head up to the surf park, it's it's more than seven minutes. But it does create a walkable community. Next slide, please. So the there were some questions raised about the the rental component. It's 100 market rental units and it's 50 below market rental units. And that was a directive of the board at the September 19, 2017 meeting. So those were where those numbers came from. We all appreciate the desire of the board to get as much detail at this point as possible on the delivery of those units. But it is simply too early in the process as the board appreciates. There's constant changes taking place in 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 funding, partnership models and so on. This is a number of years out. So Tiger Bay will have to secure a housing partner. They've had, we understand, some preliminary discussions with some groups, but no one could commit at this point. It's simply too far out for them. But it certainly needs to be known and incorporated into the housing agreement by law when that is brought forward. Now, what Tiger Bay has committed to at this point is they will provide a range of unit types with a minimum of 10% three bedroom, which will will make them more attractive for families. They will offer the units in priority to workers in Britannia, North and South. Then the rest of Area D. And if there's no take up, then they will they they will offer them to others. They will have also committed the units will only permitted to be used as a primary residence. And there will be no short term rentals of the units. And that, of course, can be written into the housing agreement. Next slide, please. So there's questions raised about the surf park maintenance and operation. The board will recall in the last two submissions. And again, in this one, there's been a fair amount of detail provided on that. Staff appreciate this is very complex. None of us are familiar with how surf parks are built and maintained and operated. So we're largely relying on the information provided by Tiger Bay. Again, the water for the surf park will come from onsite wells. And the engineers for both Tiger Bay and the SLRD have confirmed that there'll be sufficient water to serve both the surf park and all the other uses on the site. There'll be no discharge of chlorinated water into the natural environment, according to Tiger Bay. The water is only lightly chlorinated because it's constantly being agitated and turned over. And so it's not heavily chlorinated. It's slowly drained. When they do the maintenance, it takes a number of days to slowly drain the the surf park. It goes into a settlement pond where it's completely dechlorinated. From there, the engineers say there's several options for where that water would go. It can be pumped back into the aquifer to recharge it. Or it can be piped to the other side of the highway potentially. There may be other options. The critical thing here is the Ministry of Environment must approve whatever it is that Tiger Bay is proposing. And obviously, those approvals come later in the process. Next slide, please. There was a number of questions raised by the board about the surf park users and so on. Again, Tiger Bay had previously reported it's designed for all levels of experience, beginners to experts. What they're proposing is there'll be day use, plus there'll be packages of memberships, offering discounts. Much, I guess, like skiing or golfing or many other things. They envision possibly multi-day camps being held there. They suggested there could be incentives offered to local residents, discounts of various sorts. Question was raised as well. How much is this going to cost to use this thing? And what Tiger Bay has reported back is based on rates at other surf parks around the world converted into Canadian dollars. For one hour session could range between high $50 and just over $100. That's going to depend on a number of factors. Level of expertise, seasonality, whether a lesson is included and so on. So these are just preliminary estimates. Obviously, the the rates would be set much closer to when the thing would be ready to open. There've been questions about Surf Canada's use of it. Surf Canada has indicated in writing to the board that they're they're very excited about this, that they want to use it if it's constructed, but they are not seeking a permanent training facility or dedicated accommodation. They will not be there all the time. When they are in there, are there, if there is a training facility anyways with with the surf park, which they can use. There is accommodation on the site. There's obviously accommodation elsewhere up in Squamish and so on. So they're not looking for anything to be exclusively dedicated to themselves. Just to note also that there's about 350 parking stalls in the adjacent underground parcade to the surf park. That's in addition to all the other parking. There's other commercial parking, hotel parking and so on being provided. So I think there've been some question by the board about whether parking can be accommodated. And it appears certainly they they can accommodate a lot of parking on the site. Next slide, please. Commercial light industry, there was two main themes came out of the last discussion by the board. One was the amount and type of commercial and also opportunities for light industry. So Tiger Bay has done further analysis on those topics and is proposing about just over 100,000 square feet of gross floor area of commercial light industry divided into community commercial, which would be about 40,000 square feet that could accommodate a grocery, retail, personal business services and so on. There's no assurances as to what the unit, the uses are going to be. That'll depend on market demand. But certainly, there's the opportunities for a range of community commercial uses. There's what they call tourism commercial, which is 28,000 square feet. That is not the amount of tourist accommodation itself. It's not a whole hotel, for example. They're saying there's ground floor areas in the hotels that will be publicly accessible. There can be shops, cafes, personal services, all sorts of things in there that would serve not only the hotel guests, but the general public. And then there's surf park commercial, about 35,000 square feet. Some of that obviously is going to be targeted at surf park users, but the rest will be available for the general public uses. They envision their administration. They think they'll have a brew pub and there'll be some more opportunities for retail. If the demand is there, there's more second floor space that could be added to some of the buildings. And again, that'll depend on market demand. Now, on the issue of light industry, we talked about that before, that obviously we don't think it's compatible in this kind of a compact community for, you know, warehousing or manufacturing type uses. But what we're Tiger Bay is proposing and staff think is a good idea is what we're calling cottage type light industry that's compatible with other uses. And it would be permitted in the commercial areas and it would likely have both production and retail. An example would be woodworking. Someone could have a shop there where they're producing furniture and, you know, that could be wholesaled out to wherever, but they might well have a storefront there as well, glass making, pottery, I mean, all sorts of things. So we we think that's a good opportunity for some light industry uses to get into South Britannia. Next slide, please. And this is showing the locations of the various commercial and light industry. The 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 really dark red is the tourist accommodation, which includes the surf park hotel adjacent to the surf park itself. There's also the waterfront hotel down near Manati Bay. They call it a hotel, a lodge. It's not large, but it's right on the waterfront there. And then a smaller one, just by that loop there that would be have some accommodation, may have some services and so on in it. And then the majority of the the commercial is is up the northern end. There's also an area there in light orange that's sort of sitting by itself there, which Tiger Bay envisions could be some live work units, for example. And the other thing on this, just recalling back to the phasing plan. Some of the commercial is not happening. Some is happening immediately, but some of it is not happening till phase two, three sort of thing. And that is actually good because obviously by that time, there'll be more people living in the community. There'll be more demand. There'll be a better understanding of what that demand is. So rather than trying to load all the commercial into the first phase or two and finding it sitting there empty and underutilized by phasing some of the commercial, it 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 will allow perhaps more in the future because there'll be stronger demand. Next slide, please. Questions have been raised about daycare. What is being proposed is daycare would be a permitted use in all the commercial areas. And it would also be a permitted use at the community center. Obviously, the size, timing, whether there's one or two daycares. That will depend on on market demand and also the delivery model, whether it's private enterprise, public, some kind of a joint venture. So the opportunity will be there for daycare, but there is no assurance as to when it'll be delivered. Certainly, there'll be enough people living there. At some point, it will there'll be demand for it, but when it occurs is a is a question mark. Next slide, please. Questions were raised about the workforce sourcing. So what Tiger Bay had responded with is the surf park itself will have 60 to 70 employees. Average annual income of about $47,000. Tiger Bay believes that 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 income level will be sufficient to attract and retain workers for the surf park. But there are hundreds of more workers required seasonally or full time for the tourist accommodation, the retail, the food and beverage, possibly daycare, et cetera, et cetera, maybe a school. So what Tiger Bay has noted on that is that the commercial component will develop over many years. So there's time to ramp up the sourcing. It's not as if all, you know, 400 or 500 workers are required day one. It'll be over 15 years or more. They also observed that labor markets fluctuate over time, that absolutely right now, there's labor shortage, particularly former entry level jobs in 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 the corridor. But these things tend to fluctuate over time and, you know, level out. So they they feel that they will not have trouble sourcing. They also believe because of the unique tourism and outdoor activities, that'll help attract workers. They're also exploring, they don't have all the details locked in, but shuttle bus service for workers. They've had some discussions with some private shuttle bus operators, obviously, because this is time sometime often in the future, they can't get firm commitments, but they've been talking about having shuttle service not only props up to Squamish, but down to Vancouver, or shuttle buses could be moving both. You know, surf park users and and workers. So that's something they're looking at. And they also feel because of the availability of market and below market rental units in South Britannia, that should also help attract and retain workers. Next slide, please. There is a desire for more information about the transit loop. So they have their, there have been design consultants put together a concept for the transit loop. And I emphasize it is just that, a concept. It'll be refined if this project moves through at the development permit stage, but they they envision a couple of bus stalls there. Drop off pickup areas, bus shelter, bike lockers and so on. It's important to note that that will, the Surf Hotel actually has its own. It's off to the to to the right off the screen here, but the Surf Hotel has its own drop off pickup area, so will not be conflicting with what's happening with the surf park. Tiger Bay is also firmly committed to upgrading the current tunnel under the under the highway there. It'll be two lanes plus a dedicated pedestrian cycling. That design needs to be approved by Modi. The regional district will certainly have input on to that, but they have made a firm commitment that they will be upgrading the underpass. And they continue to have discussions with BC Transit on the regional hub. They feel there's been some progress, but again, given the early stage, given funding challenges that the public transit system is facing right now, there is not a firm commitment to when and how that happens. Next slide, please. Just two final items, fire services. We appreciate there's a lot of work ongoing on that issue. And more will be coming to the board, I believe, in the next number of months. Even without knowing what is required of them. Tiger Bay says they will agree or have agreed to whatever proportional contributions are required of them. So they're saying, okay, whatever costs will obviously have to pay. Energy efficiency was another item that came up. Tiger Bay is committed now to step code three for all part three multifamily buildings that would be the townhouses, apartments and so on, which would be the vast, vast majority, if not all of of the residential units on the site. And they've also committed to going above step code three if the SLRD adopts a higher level in the future. Next slide, please. So the next steps, as set out in the staff report in in the form of recommendations, if the board agrees, staff will prepare amending bylaws, both the zoning and OCP amending bylaws and bring them back to a future meeting for board consideration of first reading. And at the same time, the term sheet, which we talked about earlier, will also be brought forward. So the board will see both the bylaws and the term sheet. Next slide. And that's it for my presentation. And we're we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'll go to questions. Director Elliott first. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Mr. Vance about the phasing. And phase one includes the the wave pool. But there's no housing in phase one. So I was curious about that. And then the community amenity in terms of the community center isn't contemplated until the very end, which also was confusing to me because that is where we would include daycare space and possibly a school. So and also I couldn't tell by the table that was provided in their report about where the affordable and market rentals show up, which phase. So those are my three questions about the phasing. Thank you.
Thank you for that. You are correct. Phase one, there is no residential. It is the surf park. And that was something the staff wanted, which is that uh, wanted, which is that, um, you know, we, we did not want a situation where you know, some beginning attempt to start the Surf Park and, and then suddenly, uh, there's a bunch of housing. Uh, we want to see the, uh, Surf Park, uh, fairways along, uh, before there's any application for residential. Uh, so, uh, we anticipate with the way it's set up or the way we're proposing it be set up is that um, there would be no applications by Tiger Bay uh, for residential, which would be part of phase two. So till work is substantially commenced on the Surf Park, which we're defining as, uh, completion of earthwork. So that's why we set it up that way. Uh, with respect to the community center, uh, that is, uh, Tiger Bay's, uh, proposal, uh, for cash flow reasons, they say. Um, that, um, the community center, which is six thousand square feet, which they have now committed to fully finishing, not just a shell, is, is an expensive enterprise and, uh, they would, uh, in terms of streaming out their, uh, contributions, they would prefer that it be, uh, delivered in phase four. Obviously, yes, correct. If it's not delivered to phase four and a community, a daycare is part of it, then it's sometime into the future. Uh, with respect to the affordable and, and, and market, uh, the, the location has not been nailed down. Uh, again, it depends on the delivery model. It could happen fairly quickly and it could happen that all the affordable and, uh, market rental, all hundred and fifty units are, are done at the same time in, in, in one or two, uh, buildings. Or, uh, they may be streamed out over, uh, several phases. So we simply do not know at this time, obviously there's a desire, uh, in the, uh, first phase of residential to start to introduce at least some of that, uh, rental housing. In other words, it cannot all be shoved off till, for example, phase four, there either it's, it's, it's happening all early on or it's streamed out over a number of phases. Again, it depends on the, um, uh, the funding partnerships, delivery models and so on.
Follow up Director Elliott, go ahead.
Uh, in terms of, um, the walkability, I, I saw the concentric circles. I was just wondering what is in the middle of those circles, like what is the center? And then, um, uh, also, uh, do we have, um, standards for like separated bike lanes and sidewalks? So they're sort of defined as major trail and, and secondary. But I actually don't know what we mean by that and, and what that would look like because um, so I'm just wondering where in our policies would we require that, that level of detail?
Uh, I'll, I can answer the first and I'll, um, defer to, uh, Director Needham on the, uh, second. The, the, the first, I, I, I believe simply what they've done is they've taken, uh, a dead center, uh, in the neighborhood. It's not meant to represent anything other than it's the, uh, the middle of, of the neighborhood and they've just done the, uh, circles out, uh, from, from, from around that. Um, I, I would note certainly for the, the, the vast majority of the residential, it, it, it is north of, of, of the highway. There is that one face of, uh, residential, uh, townhouses contemplated for south. So certainly for the, uh, majority of the people living uh, in, uh, South Britannia, they, they would be, uh, uh, quite close to, uh, uh, the, the, the amenities, the commercial and so on in the, uh, northern part of the, uh, site. Uh, with respect to the, uh, standards for trails, multi-use pass and so on, I'll, I'll turn that over to, uh, Director Needham.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the S L R D does have trail standards and they were borrowed from the R M O W trail standards.
So paved and marked?
Uh, there are various trail standards, so there, depending on the, the type of trail that it is. Some, sometimes it can be crushed gravel. Uh, sometimes it can be paved and marked. It really varies throughout the S L R D, but yes, we do have trail standards and we haven't, uh, you know, we haven't reached the development permit stage at this point on this development. So the trails would be further determined, um, as we proceed.
Okay, um, I'll go to Director Birch Jones.
Thank you. Um, two questions. I just wondered, I see with the um, market, the affordable housing that it's preferentially Britannia Beach and then Area D. And I wondered if we wanted to expand that to the S L R D. I guess that's more a question for the board than the presenter. But the other question, Mr. Vance, um, I still have a problem with the wave garden, the, the amount of sort of concrete and water and energy and who it's catering to. I personally would rather just see a park, but having said that, when I think about the logistics of a surf wave, um, how high are the concrete walls going to be around this structure? Or is it going to be built deep into the ground so you can look down, down on it? You understand my question? Thank you.
Uh, I do, do not have, uh, a, uh, uh, an answer for that in terms of the, uh, height. Uh, I, we, we, we understand that it'll be partially, uh, built into the ground and, and then, uh, burmed up, uh, around it. Uh, obviously the, uh, the walls would have to be high enough on it that, uh, there would not be, uh, water from the, uh, Surf Park potentially spilling out and into the adjacent wetlands, creeks and so on. But uh, beyond that, I do not have any technical information on the, uh, the, the, uh, design.
Okay. Uh, Director DeMar, go ahead.
Yeah, the question on, uh, the dechlorization and either, uh, piping it across railroad track or into the aquifer. So the aquifer, is it where the potable water is going to be taken from?
Through the chair, uh, yes, that, that, that is correct. Uh, there'll be a separate, uh, line, uh, feeding, uh, water to the, um, Surf Park, uh, as opposed to the other uses, but it is all coming out of the, uh, same, uh, aquifer on, on the site. All the water is being supplied by wells in, uh, South Britannia.
Okay, so, uh, I, I would presume that, uh, with the maintenance program and ministry environment that if they do, pump it down into that, into the lagoon, that it would eventually make it down into the aquifer. So I'm, I'm sure that Ministry of Environment will, uh, make sure that, uh, it's always going to be potable by the time it gets into the aquifer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike. Uh, Director Richmond, go ahead.
Thanks. Couple of questions, uh, a little bit around transit and process. Um, so, uh, Mr. Vance, you said that there was going to be a drop off at the Surf Park as well as the transit loop. Uh, I know there's been a lot of discussions past how, uh, transit's going to look there. Is it, you know, just a pull off off the highway and then connections so that, uh, buses don't slow their progress down by winding their way through. So, um, when you say that there's going to be a drop off, uh, uh, is that for shuttle or are you thinking that's for more of a regional transit bus? I'm wondering which buses are dropping out there. Second thing, uh, question for staff. You know, um, I appreciate, uh, the term sheet and, and some of the information that's been brought forward. Um, I'm still looking for a little bit more level of detail on some of this stuff. So my question for staff is if we go to first reading and then through the process of public hearing and all that, what, um, ability and when throughout the process does the board have to, um, they're asked for more, not more level detail, but to, to, to really shape things like the trail system, um, when there's more detail provided, uh, same with the transit in terms of parking and that. I still don't have a really good sense of how it's all going to be connected. So I'm wondering what our ability is as we go through this process to further act that.
Um, so in, in order, the, the, so there's the Regional Transit Service, which, uh, would stay on the highway, would not, uh, as we understand it. Uh, things change, of course, uh, becoming into the site. So there's been discussions, we understand, uh, B C, between B C Transit and, uh, uh, Tiger Bay, uh, for a hub, a regional transit hub, uh, located in the, um, vicinity of the former, uh, um, Galileo, I think it is, a coffee shop up there. Uh, but there's also envisioned in time, it may start off with, uh, um, private shuttle service, it could end up being public bus service. Uh, but there, there will be, uh, buses, it be at shuttles or, uh, public buses, uh, moving hopefully uh, through the site so that, uh, transit loop or hub that we, we, we showed earlier, which was internal, that's intended for shuttle buses, public buses, not the regional, uh, but public buses if they come down there. And, and just to clarify, um, that is the drop off and pickup, uh, for the Surf Park as well as other things. Uh, but there's also a separate drop off, uh, pickup, uh, for the Surf Hotel immediately, uh, adjacent. Uh, with respect to the, uh, term sheet, uh, certainly when, uh, if, if the board uh, allows, uh, the staff going and work on the bylaws, when the term sheet comes forward, it certainly uh, will be more, uh, fleshed out than, uh, what you've seen in, in the way of a, uh, summary today. And certainly the board can look at it to that point and go there's details missing or things we want added in there, which obviously the applicant would have to, uh, agree to. Uh, the term sheet, uh, you could go away and get further work done on it and perhaps the bylaws as well. Uh, if they're given first. So certainly, uh, then the term sheet and bylaws would come, uh, again, perhaps a modified form for, uh, second reading. I think that's the way you do it in the S L R D. And then, uh, referral to public hearing. Uh, but what typically would be the case is that the, uh, if, if the board, uh, were to give the bylaws third reading, the board would also be, uh, agreeing with the term sheet and would obviously be in a, a, enough detail uh, to, to, to make you comfortable. And then, uh, after third reading and before fourth, the term sheet, uh, would be turned into a full legal development agreement. Now, having said that, there's certain, uh, local governments that, uh, want to see the draft of the development agreement with all its legalese, uh, earlier in the, uh, process and not later. So certainly the board has that option as well to say, no, we, 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 we want to see all the details, even if it is legalese and, uh, we would like to see that, uh, full blown draft development agreement, uh, prior, uh, to public hearing. So that is an option as well.
Thanks for that. That's helpful. I, I mean, uh, for me, the level of detail I'm talking about are things like, you know, when with regards to transit, how there would be, um, you know, E V charges, bike lockups, those sorts of details, size. Um, you know, the trail connectivity, a little bit more detail on that. So that's just what I want to make sure that, you know, I think we've had a good back and forth with the developers and with staff on this to, to flush out priorities for the board. Um, I just want to make sure that we still have the ability to get into that little detail and requirements.
Okay, uh, Director Needham, go ahead.
Yeah, typically at the rezoning stage, we wouldn't get into, um, details such as bike lockers and signs. Um, the, the rezoning stage, we're really trying to look at overall density and amenities and provision of services, et cetera. We would, uh, look at the level of detail of, of signage, et cetera, at a development permit stage. So once this is rezoned, um, development permits over five hundred, uh, square feet, uh, would be brought forward to the board for their review.
Thank you for that. Director Crompton.
Thanks Chair. Um, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Vance. Uh, to the question asked by Director Elliott earlier, does the agreement contemplate the, uh, affordable, uh, units and the market rental um, timing being completely within the control of the developer? Or is there a lever for the S L R D to, um, have those, uh, be at a certain time during the process? I, I understand that you've said our preference is for it to be earlier. I'm wondering if as, um, contemplated, we would have any ability to enforce, um, earlier delivery?
Uh, thank you for that. Yes, if that is the, uh, wish of the board, um, that, uh, you know, I'll be just an example, fifty percent, for example, be delivered as part of phase two and the other, you know, fifty percent is part of phase three at the latest. Um, that, that, the, the board certainly can direct it be in there earlier. Again, it, it's, it's such an unknown as to what the delivery model might be, but if there's any concern by the board that, you know, by delaying when that affordable housing or, 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 you know, market, uh, non-market rental is delivered, that it won't happen. It'll happen too late to be a benefit. Certainly the board can, uh, uh, direct that it is simply going to have to, uh, occur earlier in the phasing. For example, you look at phase two or phase three, you know, we can make it a sub-phase within phase three, you know, look at phase three, it's, it's, it's a lot of units and they're all happening. Uh, you know, at the same time, there'll be sub-phases. So we could make it a condition of a, you know, when you get to phase two, uh, you know, sub-phase two of phase two, that, uh, some of the affordable housing or all the affordable housing uh, has to be delivered. So it's certainly within the, uh, discretion of the board to, uh, direct, uh, when, uh, it happens. Obviously Tiger Bay at this point is looking for some, uh, flexibility because there are so many unknowns, but they're worried about unknowns. The board is equally worried about unknowns. So it's obviously the, the board's ultimate decision.
Uh, thank you. And then my, uh, second question is, when do you imagine or propose that the definition of, of, um, sub-market will be clarified for the board?
I'll, uh, direct that to, uh, uh, Director, uh, Needham. There is a, uh, definition, I believe, that is, uh, standardly, uh, used now for, uh, below market, uh, rental.
Yes, we, we would bring those details back at first reading.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else with questions? Uh, Director Stoner, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, I appreciate that there was a twenty seventeen board resolution around the number of affordable and, um, market rental units. However, it is out of step with our regional growth strategy that aims for a minimum of fifteen percent affordable housing units. And I'm just curious why we're still at such a significant discrepancy between the policy direction and what's being offered on the table?
Uh, through the chair and I'll let Director Needham elaborate on it, but, uh, there's, there's been no direction from the uh, board, uh, since twenty seventeen, uh, that, um, it, uh, be, be greater than what has been proposed. So we've all been operating under the twenty seventeen, uh, board, uh, resolution.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have anything more to add. I mean, the, that was, uh, sort of the, those were the walking orders that were given to the developer and staff have, uh, committed to that board, uh, request.
Okay, I, I, um, appreciate that there may have not been an updated board resolution. I think it has been brought up in the last two meetings that I've attended on this topic around increasing affordable housing. Um, and in particular, bringing forward a workforce housing strategy, uh, and how that aligns. And so I still don't see that here. And I'm just curious if um, we're at the point where the workforce housing strategy is simply the market rental units, or if those are still seen by staff as two separate things.
Uh, a, a point of, uh, uh, observation, the, um, back in, in twenty seventeen, when the board did bring forth that resolution, as, as, as a number of the board members know, the maximum number of as, as, as a number of the board members know, the maximum number of permitted residential units in South Britannia in the OCP is 1,000. So the board at the time said, okay, we want an affordable housing, a below-market housing component. We will allow that to be in addition to the 1,000 units. So that's where the extra 50 came from, so that it's 1,050 units. If, if, if the board wants to see a larger affordable housing component, that the question I'd imagine would be, well, you know, if we, just making a number up, another 50 or 75, whatever it is on top of the 50, would that be in addition to the, also in addition to the 1,000 units? So it'll be 1,000 market rental or, yeah, 1,000 market rental and, and, and just strata and so on, plus these affordable housing units? Or does the affordable housing start to eat into the 1,000 market units?
Go ahead.
And thank you. Another question, just with respect to clarification on the daycare space. I believe our last discussion around that amenity was around being able to secure that space as part of, as part of public space in terms of some of the challenges that we're seeing with escalating costs for childcare rental in, in private settings. And so I'm, was confused, or it seemed unclear to me as to whether as part of this term sheet, that designated daycare space and square footage would actually then be turned over to the SLRD? Or if that is still up for negotiation?
Through Chair, that has not been contemplated to date. Tiger Bay's position is it's private enterprise, which we appreciate has got different economics that can simply be renting some of the commercial space. If it goes into the community center, it could be a, a different model. But Tiger Bay to date has not made a commitment to building some amount of daycare space and turning it over to some, some sort of an organization or a group to, to, to operate.
Go ahead, Director Needham.
Daycare can be a really tricky issue. For example, when we did the Spring Creek neighborhood in, in Whistler, there's a beautiful building in the middle of that neighborhood with a grass roof that was built for, specifically for daycare. And it was run as a daycare for several years, but there was a lack of daycare staff. And that building and duh-duh, not being run as a daycare any longer. It's now a food bank or it used to be a food bank. I'm not sure what it's being used for now. But it's, it's one of those things where you can create this space, but you really can't guarantee that it's going to be used as daycare. So, and just for the board's information, there is a daycare that is being proposed at Britannia North, just up the road. And again, it's unknown, you know, what the utilization of, of that will be at this time.
Director Crompton, or did you have a follow-up, Director Stoner?
Yeah, I did just have a quick follow-up on that specific item. Appreciate that there are complexities in terms of securing childcare space, and there is many reasons why it is a crisis across the Cedar Sky corridor in terms of access. It has to do with access to the space itself for childcare as well as being able to secure employees. The district has gone, has moved so far as to put a covenant on some of the affordable housing units that are coming forward in future developments so that they are earmarked for childcare providers in that same community. So I think that there are ways to work around that and something that we should consider in this proposal as well.
Okay, Director Crompton, question?
Thank you, Chair. Through the Chair to Director Needham, can you not zone a commercial space to be used as childcare only? Is that something that the board could do if they so chose?
Yes, it's possible. The site is currently proposed to allow for daycare use. So if they, you know, commercial daycare provider wished to operate a daycare, they could in any of the commercial zoning that's being proposed for this area. So it is an option. If we were to zone a site specifically for daycare, there's a chance that there may not be any uptake. And you could have an empty space. So it really-
Which, which would, I guess the question would be, would that not then hold that space for the potential of a daycare coming in, rather than turning it into a, a restaurant or a coffee shop?
I mean, I guess, I guess that is a, an option, like there could be a space that's simply zoned for daycare and, and nothing else.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other hands with questions. So, go ahead, Director Elliott.
What is driving the OCP amendment? What is different about this proposal that's not aligned with the area DOCP?
Through, through the Chair, the OCP currently contemplates very modest amount of commercial in South Britannia. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but certainly nothing like what is contemplated or proposed here. And that was a direction by the board years ago, wanting to see more employment generating activities down there. The tourist accommodation is also more than was envisioned. I think there's some other more technical details in there, but it certainly does require some, some OCP amendments. I, I would suggest we also want to drop in to the South Britannia OCP, some kind of high-level master plan. If, if you look at the OCP currently for South Britannia, it's, it's basically words and numbers, but there's no sort of, here's how we see everything laying out on the site. Here, we have an opportunity where we have an applicant with a master plan that we can take. And we, we don't want to be so exact that if a building moves 20 feet, you got to amend the OCP. But I, I, I believe we can put in a high-level master plan that shows generally where things will be located, uses a high-level trails map. There, there's many things that we could add in there that would put some flesh on the bones.
And thank you, Mr. Vance. And also, I'm sorry if I missed this in, in prior reports, but how are we measuring density? Is it FAR or is it units per hectare? Or how do we get a sense of how dense this is at buildout based on what's proposed in the rezoning?
Through the Chair, a, a good question. The, the OCP for South Britannia does not use FARs. It uses, I noted, the total number of units, but it also has unit per area, per acre counts in it. But it, it's curious wording in there where, and again, I don't have the details in front of me. It is in a previous report where certain forms of housing, the UPA is spelled out, but it's not clear. Is it a net UPA, a gross UPA? And then there's this curious category, which I believe may cover off apartments where it is so vague that it's not clear at all what they're, 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 they're talking about. And, and in fairness, and, and I get this, when the, when, when, when the planners put that OCP together for South Britannia, you know, it was assumed that it would be a larger area that was going to be developed. As the board, or some of you may recall, going back years, had envisioned that there'd be some residential up at the top of the cliffs around where the BC Hydro line was going to be. The decision was made, no, let's take that stuff off of there and drop it down below the cliffs, and that will leave room for the bypass. So the UPA counts that were put into the, the OCP, how long ago? It was 20 years or so. I mean, they're just best estimates of the time without really knowing what the development would look like there. But certainly we can come up with some UPA numbers for the board, making clear what we're including in those, whether they're gross net and so on.
You're still muted.
Sorry. There was one more question I had for you, Mr. Vance. You said in your verbal presentation, and I know it's somewhere written in the report, that workforce fluctuates over time and you expect it to level out. So there's a shortage of workforce now, but that it fluctuates over time and you would expect it to level out. But what is that assumption based on? Because there's been a workforce shortage for quite some time in the corridor. And so I'm just wondering what, what data or trends we're, we're basing that, that assumption on?
Through the Chair, that is Tiger Bay's position that the market will fluctuate over time. We have no way of knowing, as you point out, Director Elliott, if that is, is the case or not, that, that, you know, there may be continued shortage for 15, 20 years, or it may turn around. But this is Tiger Bay's position is that the labor market will fluctuate and they, right or wrong, feel confident that they'll be able to source workers for the, for, for the, for the neighborhood.
Hey. So, where do we go from here? There are three recommendations within the report and where would you like to go from here, Director Needham or Mr. Vance, as far as? I need a little direction, or if anyone on the board would like to make a motion, or do we defer this to? Because this is committee of the whole, we're not making decisions here, but this is a request for decision. So that's got me stumped. CEO, Homer?
Thank you, Chair. If the board was ready to follow the recommendations that were put forward by staff, they would be forwarded from the committee to the board to become resolutions.
Okay. Do we feel, go ahead, Director Rainbow?
Do you, do you need a, or can we have a resolution that covers all three of those, or the first three of those, or do they need to be done separately? I think we, my, my comment is, I think we need to move this along. We've, we've got some questions about detail of, of one kind or another. And I think as staff have pointed out, that most of that will get dealt with either through the OCP zoning process or, or in first reading. I, I'm a little puzzled some, by, by some of the, the, our issues. You know, we, we, when this first came to the board, there was no employment opportunity in the plan at all. Now, that was probably five, almost six years, maybe six years ago. And we, we definitely said, there must be employment at, at this site. And now we've got a plan in front of us that includes quite a bit of employment. And now we're saying, well, there's a problem with, with where are you going to find the workers? I, I don't, I don't see that that's a very consistent argument to be making. If we, if we're saying to a proponent, you put some employment in there, and they do, we shouldn't then be worrying about where they're going to find the workers. That's their problem. They've done what we asked them to do. So I, I, I'm asking for some direction. How, how do we move this along? Do I move number one, two, and three altogether, or, and four as well?
You can, yeah.
And I will.
Okay. Do we have a seconder, seconded by Director DeMar? Do you have a comment, Director DeMar? Were you just seconding it? Okay. Are there comments? Director Stoner?
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment to the first part of the recommendation that in conjunction with the board's consideration of first reading, the proposal be updated to reflect a minimum of 15% affordable housing as per the RGS.
Okay. Do I have a seconder for that amendment? Director Needham, clarification?
I'd like to know if that would be part of the total or in addition to, because the site is quite dense as it is. And so, you know, we'd be starting to push the numbers if we start to add significantly to the density of the site at this point. So that would be helpful to know.
Intention was that we would not increase the number of units on the site, but it's 15% of what's available.
Of the total numbers? Yeah. Okay, do I have a seconder for that amendment? Direct, Director Elliott seconds the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment, Director Rainbow?
I, I think we had already agreed that there could be an addition to the original 1,000 units. And we're now taking that off the board?
That's how the amendment is proposed. Because of the density already on the site. So if a total number of 1,050 units is what the site can handle, then 15% of that must be affordable, is how this amendment is proposed.
So we are, we are leaving it at 1,050?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Director Needham, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, it's hard to do the math on the fly here.
158 units.
Yeah, so the 50 units, though, were already in addition. So I think we should base it on the base number of 1,000 and add whatever else is required to, to make the 15%, if that's the case.
So are you suggesting 1150 or?
So it would be 100, we'd have to add 100 more units. So of the 1,000 units, 100 of those would then need to be in addition, plus the 50 that are being proposed.
So for a total number of units of 1150 or a total number of units of 1,000?
No, I think a total number of units of 1,050, of which 150 must be affordable. That, so it takes the, the percentage out of it.
Okay.
It says 100, it specifies a number rather than a percentage. And it's pretty close. Well, I mean, 15% of 1,000 would be 150. So, and I think, what is it? Somebody just say 158 would be 15% of 1,050. So what Director Needham is suggesting is that we just keep it to 1,050 units, 150 of which must be affordable. Whatever term you want to use.
Okay, Director Crompton?
And I wouldn't want to see those come out of the market rental units.
Right. Director Stoner, are you comfortable with that clarity on your amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other comments to the amendment? Seeing none, I'm calling the question on the amendment. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now on the amended motion. Is there any discussion on the motion as it has been amended?
Chair?
Go ahead, Director Richmond.
I'm, I'm happy to see this come back to first reading, but so that we're all on the same page. I am hopeful as well to see some of the level of detail that several directors have brought up today. Again, mine regarding transit questions, other details around trails and daycare. So if if the bylaws in the first reading is going to be given, or the bylaws are going to be given first reading, it's going to come to public hearing. Those are the sorts of things that I'm hoping will come back.
Director Needham, go ahead.
It would be helpful if Director Richmond could specify what level of detail he'd like to see around the trails and the daycare?
The daycare, it was just, I was just more sharing some of the concerns about the late phase of the daycare, when it's going to get constructed. That was my concern, transit, it was more detailed in terms of what the hub looks like and what's being provided.
Okay, thank you. I saw a comment from Director Rainbow.
Yes, just this, that we're looking at a project here that is going to take quite a long time, even if it's approved fairly quickly, the construction of the surf park, that's a fairly lengthy process, and after, as that nears completion, as the base part of it has been done, then housing development will start. While that's going on, just up the road, McDonald Development, or what's it called? Britannia Ocean Fund Development Corporation, it is developing their commercial area, which includes a daycare. And I think that by the time that's complete and operating, then we would have a better idea what the demand is in the area, when a daycare is necessary in South Britannia. I think we need to look at the two things in tandem. I think we, you know, we could get into too much detail at this point and then not be able to follow through on it. And I think the idea, as was mentioned before, you can designate a space as a daycare, but you can't force people to go and set up a business there, and we don't have the wherewithal to set it up ourselves. The government won't come in and bother them. Maybe they will by then. But, you know, we have a daycare building, playground area, all planned in Britannia North. And as I say, when that's up and running, when that's moving, then that will give us an idea of what we need to specify for the South. At the moment, I think just the notion that there will be daycare facilities provided, I think is as much detail as we need.
You for that comment. Director Crompton, then Director Elliott?
No, we spot zone things like gas stations and restaurants, and we require people to put in grocery stores and not turn them into other things. And I think what happens is that the landowner has an asset that they need to manage towards that end and find a tenant who will deliver to the zoning. So, I agree, we can't force someone to operate a certain kind of business, but we can certainly provide them with an asset that leads them in that direction, and we do it all the time. I, we in Whistler have experiences with amenities being promised in the later phases of developments and not receiving those amenities. And so, from my perspective, to gain my support on this, I'd want to see these amenities front loaded, and for me, that includes the things that we've talked about, like affordable housing, I want to see that as early as possible, like the community spaces as early as possible. I probably wouldn't support something that backloaded all of the public amenities to the end of the process. I think it's incumbent upon the developer to deliver the amenities early, and that's what I will be looking for when this returns. I personally would like to see those development agreements before public hearing. I think that that's important, and it provides the kind of clarity that we need to make an informed decision. Oftentimes, I find us going into a public hearing, people make their comments, and then we're kind of stuck where we say, well, if we want to make any changes, we need to have another public hearing, and that'll be really hard, and I don't want to find ourselves in that position, so I'd like to have as much clarity as possible before public hearing. Thank you.
You, Director Elliott?
Thank you. So, I think at first reading, we do need to really figure out this concept of daycare in this neighborhood. The federal government's promised universal daycare and funding and dropping the cost of daycare by half by next year. And then in BC, daycare is moving under the Ministry of Education within the next two years, and they'll be looking at wanting daycares co-located with schools. So, we do need to dedicate space for daycare. It is a crisis in this corridor, it's a crisis in Pemberton, in Whistler, in Squamish, and as Staffs has said, we're building a highly dense neighborhood here in Britannia South, and we need to anticipate that these families will have daycare needs, because you don't want mothers calling you on the phone crying because they can't get back to work because there's no daycare spaces. So, this is a problem we can fix today in this new neighborhood and not create a crisis for these families that will be living there, just by saying it'll take care of itself. It won't. So, we need dedicated daycare space. We should have a covenant on keeping the rent low, so that it can be, you know, make a viable business model. This space requires indoor and outdoor space, so just saying that if it shows up in the commercial area, it'll be fine. No, if you're not planning for the outdoor space that you need, no daycare provider can use the commercial space. So, it has to be planned, and it should be done in consultation with current providers so that they can show you what a viable business model looks like, you know, to run an infant toddler program and a three to five program. The space needs to be this big, and our outdoor space needs to be that big, and our rent needs to be below this. So, there will, there is demand out there for childcare, and as soon as universal childcare happens, there'll be more demand, because women are choosing not to go back to the workforce because they can't afford daycare, but that's changing, and we've got to be ready for that. And as Director Stoner said, you know, we've started to put covenants on some of the affordable housing units specifically for ECE workers, so that they can be present and live in our communities. I think the concept of only committing to step three is just a little bit lacking vision. So, by 2032, everything needs to be net zero ready. And so, this is apparently a 20-year buildout. By the time they get all the approvals from CN and MOTI, which are not easy to do, you've got to wonder how close we'll be to 2032, plus all the permitting and that sort of thing. So, this should be a neighborhood that is striving. We're in a climate emergency, and I'm not seeing a developer that is striving to be leading in this area. And I don't understand what the EV-ready commitment is for this, but I think it should be there at first reading. I think our definition of affordable that we're using is okay, but given some of the low salaries that will be part of this development, I think some of the permits should be geared to income. There, I think they said median, there was a whole bunch of averages versus median. I think their median wage was $47,000, they anticipate, which means folks below that are really going to need affordable housing geared to their income. I do think the phasing is a little bit flawed right now. I think we need to clearly see where the affordable housing units are coming in, and they shouldn't be backloaded. If we're starting with the wave pool, then staff need to be able to live there to support the wave pool, so pulling some of that in closer. And I also would like to see the density clarified. I really can't picture yet how dense this is, and maybe if we show it for each phase of the development, just so I can sort of imagine, yeah, the livability of it based on, as Mr. Vance said, it's not clear right now in the zoning bylaw, so clarity on that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone on the Board? I think everyone's raised some, oh, go ahead Director Stoner.
Yeah, I won't reiterate the comments of my colleagues, I will just voice my support for them, and I will also be looking for those items as it comes forward to first reading, but I won't reiterate the comments.
Thank you. I think that everyone's made some really good, clear requests for more clarity on a number of issues, and I know that these are not insurmountable, so I look forward to seeing the next round of this. I would also like to see a visual representation of how this project overlaps and meets the neighboring development. I know that they're separate projects and they're under separate agreements, but when you consider two properties of this magnitude right beside each other, it's very difficult to imagine without seeing a visual representation. So, that would be really helpful if we could have a mapping, and then some of the high level overlapping services, because I've heard Brew Hub in both, I've heard daycares in both, I've heard school sites in both proposals, and so, it's really important to me to see how these connect to each other and how they support each other, so that we don't have these conflicts. If neither contemplates something and we need to make sure that that is contemplated, I'd like to see those overlapping, how they meet. So, with that, unless there is any other comment from anyone on the Board, I will call the question on the resolution. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Go ahead, Director Rainbow.
Thank you. Prior to the, just prior to the pandemic hitting us last year, School District 48 had approached us and asked for a joint meeting between the trustees and our Directors. And it occurs to me that that might be a good thing to think about now, especially as Director Elliott pointed out, daycare is going to be shifted into the Ministry of Education. There's been some discussion about the possibility of a school site at South Britannia, and it might be a good idea for us to meet with the trustees and talk to them about the way that they can make decisions about school sites and acquisition of sites and so on and so forth, because if there is to be a school site there, it needs to be tied down right now. There's no way a school will be built until there are kids there to justify it, and even then, it's not guaranteed that a school would be built, because a lot of districts, I mean, the distance from Britannia to Squamish is not great in terms of school busing. And so, it would be useful for us to have that discussion with the school, we'll see what their plans are, and see how we need to incorporate that into the overall planning for Britannia as a whole, just not just South, but South and North, and Ferry Creek.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, we'll try and set that meeting up sooner than later, so that we can have, I think, probably a bigger discussion, like you say, the three areas involved. Okay, any other post-motion comments? Seeing none, thank you Director Needham and Mr. Vance for being here today. Thank you for the excellent presentation, we appreciate your time, and we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you.
Chair.
All right. It is 11:26, we've been at this for two and a half hours. I wouldn't mind a break to, but I don't want to butt up into lunchtime. CEO, Helmer, do you have suggestions? Should we go for 15 minutes, or should we go for lunch early? What?
Thank you, Chair. I think we're very close to finishing the open committee of the whole agenda.
Yeah.
So, you might want to just finish the last couple items, and if you want to take, we can either, we could take an early lunch if you wanted, or we could take a brief break and reconvene, whatever the preference of the Board is, we'll work with.
Okay. Anyone, I mean, we can rip through the rest of this, 7.1 and 8, and then take a break, a Folsom break, and then come back for the closed portion, and then be done? Okay. Let's do that. Okay, 7.1, Chair's verbal, I have none for today. Any late business? Director Clark? I don't think so. Okay, thank you, sorry, I'm not myself right now. Okay, we will take lunch for half an hour, come back at 12. Director Stoner, go ahead.
Do you want to motion, and then we can come back in the closed link?
Sure. Yeah, motion to go into close, moved by Director Stoner, seconded by Director Crompton. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.